Okay, I'm gonna call the meetings to order. The regular scheduled Central Board of Education meeting Monday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. That's seven P M. We will start with our first order of business, please write a report.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the Constitution of America, and the Constitution of this world.
The roll call, Jeff, you here? Scott, here. I'm here. Yeah, here. Ryan, here. Kirk, here. David, are you here?
Yep.
Okay, all members are present. Was the meeting properly notified?
Yes, it was, and it is being recorded.
Okay. This time we have an opportunity for public comment. Did we have anybody sign up?
No.
Do we have any public comment at this time? They're hearing none, we will move on. This time we don't believe we have an highlight on you. Our next item is comments from board members and superintendent. Let's start with congratulating the new members, newly elected members to the school board. So congratulate them all. You have a lot of work ahead of you, so I'm hoping that you're prepared for that. If you have any comments you'd like to make at this time.
Can we delegate stuff to them, yeah?
I will be your... Okay, with that, we will move on to the next item, which is the oath of office for the elected school board members. So, we have three of you, Josh, Erica, Vince. You wouldn't mind standing and reading the oath?
You find me the choice.
So, who goes first? I, Joshua, headed.
Hi, Eric Henry.
Hi, Vince Trill.
Having been elected for the office of the Central Board of the State of Wisconsin Square, then I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and more faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of Senate, the events of my ability.
Now, what we need to do, the most important thing, is to sign it. Then we can file it, and it is official. Okay, congratulations and welcome aboard. Uh, the next item is discussion with regards to the referendum results. What discussion now? I don't know if there's comments there. I guess I'm disappointed that it didn't pass. It didn't pass for a pretty resounding vote count. I don't think it resolves any of the issues. As usual, we had a lot of comments from the Monday morning quarterbacks after the fact. We should have done this, and we should have done that. I get frustrated with those people because they don't step forward during the discussion to help rather than sniping from the weeds, so. As of tonight, I won't be part of this board anymore, so unfortunately, there's gonna be a lot of unfinished business that I wish we could have resolved, but I'm gonna leave that to the upcoming members to resolve. I'm sure that they will come up with a solution to those issues. Hope anybody else has any comments at this time.
Hello, this is the post referendum survey was set on electronic for you, Dave. Just the folks are gonna thrill share with your staff and parents and guardians, postcard and go out asking, you know, in every mailbox, asking for the feedback. Donovan, it closes May tenth. Donovan group will, you know, summarize the results and do a report, the regular May board meeting. It's kind of the first step, get some detailed feedback.
From the teachers handling that.
It hasn't helped Morrell. Yeah. Maybe you have to ask them, it's individual thing, but yeah, overall, yeah.
I'm sorry, like how you bounce back from that as administration to your teachers?
Okay, are there any other comments with regards to that item? Okay. The next item on the agenda is to set a date for the teacher to be for a meeting.
I presume it'll be David and I, and we'll have to have one other person. I think to do that.
Yeah, it's kind of tricky, you know, we put it on the agenda, but you know, we'd like to get the date set. But we understand with the new incoming board members, they're gonna be designated on certain committees. We don't know who's on what committee yet. If we could get the date set, at least we could get, you know, the meeting space reserved and get it on folks' calendars.
What are you thinking?
Well, like, early May would be a typical time.
Typically, we like meeting at like four o'clock or late, right after school.
Right after school. Going into the evening, you know, support staff. It's longer typically because each group meets for about a half an hour, so four to eight or nine P M. With the teachers, it's generally shorter, about an hour.
Tuesday, the eleventh? David, you have a...
Yeah, that works pretty good for me, Tuesday, the eleventh. I have nothing booked that evening.
Okay, and that would be the teacher one, so that's four o'clock-ish, David?
Uh, yeah, I can make four o'clock work.
I think there will be significant conversation about what the school can do without the referendum.
Yeah, I agree.
It's fair conversation. So, four o'clock.
You need the third? I can do the eleventh. We need the third.
Yeah. That'd be good.
District office?
It's probably at...
You better go a larger group, and I should a little auditorium, the group. Not a large auditorium, but not a large hall. And even that, we'll see, might not be big enough. I'll see if the auditorium's open, that'd be the first choice. We'll go large group instruction room.
We should... We have to post it, but I would suggest that we post it, because all board members would be present. Just, it's good for them to hear what teachers are saying directly. You know, we'll give a report, but yeah, so we might have a majority in my entire board, so I just think we should make sure.
Just in case you have a core.
Everybody is one.
Yeah, this, if you needed three, I can do it, just to make...
Yeah, very good.
I, yeah, I'm pretty sure the auditorium will be booked for the play practice, so I'll use large group instructional.
And maybe you and I can talk about the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, then the next item would be set a date for the support staff meeting for...
Kirk? Ask me. That's like a whole league. Yeah. Well, for the thirteen to four. How early can you start? I don't know. No, he would swear.
But you have a friend, Kirk, with you and Tricia. I don't know what Tricia was. It'll be a committee that all of them can be put together.
But in the meantime, we'll communicate Kirk and...
And you put on a floor for the fifteenth, I guess, tomorrow. One of my bosses thought like, oh, wait, I have to go through your supervisor.
Yeah, check on it, email Pam and I, and she'll start soliciting invites.
Just so people know, it isn't like the old union negotiations. Basically, this is what the school has to advance as a pay raise, and we listen to what other things they want that may or may not be pay related that we might be able to accommodate.
And so to the new board members, the the non-teaching, we meet with bus drivers and the kitchen staff and the terras and kind of meet through for twenty or thirty minutes, and sometimes they're largely represented, sometimes they forego the meeting, so. Gee, that'll be an agenda for the evening and with an idea of which group they're gonna come.
And the purpose is really just have an open line of communication, so they can share things that are concerned to them, and you can hear them.
Okay, is there any other discussion here right now?
Okay.
Then we'll move on to the next item, which is the DPI student count audit results.
Uh, we're selected for a student membership audit, and Cliff and Alan Larson does our financial audit. They conduct this as well. Always do a great job, and then they report it to the Department of Public Instruction, and then they in turn, you know, decide what to do with that. In this case, there were a couple of findings with errors that we caught and, you know, self-reported before they even started. As you can imagine, with one hundred, one thousand six hundred and seventy-two kids and then actual count, and then you've got about three hundred kids plus minus, probing roaming in and out. It's quite the challenge, and like, I'll give you an example, one of the findings was, you know, family had moved and never notified us, right? So, it's like, it's tough, you know?
So, they were either in the rural district or they went the other way?
They went from...
But actually, no, will they make an adjustment in our...
Yeah, so we make the adjustment of the two plus two students, and then, yeah, it gets fixed and found in time, but it's still an audit. It's like a test.
They moved in December, so it does not affect revenue, but we were able to add them to our January column.
Nothing the board has to do with respect to that?
No.
Okay, just a fire.
Uh, next item on the agenda is staff appreciation breakfast plan for May fifth. We will receive the department's agenda regarding to the notification, you know, sent out. So. And, you know, breakfast served beginning at some fifteen A M. at each of the buildings. Staff log, district office, bus garage. The venue that we hold. Staff appreciation day, so if there are any board members that could attend, I think usually very much appreciated.
I'd make it work for me. I'll just reschedule something, but tell me what building you want me to go to or...
Yeah, maybe touch base early that week and split up in lieu of cardiac rehab.
I'm down about nine forty-four, Scott.
I'm trying to, when I get into training buildings, I can't, but usually you get into conversations with the teachers and staff. You're the ones to visit all facilities, kind of falls by the wayside, only make, you know, one or two, so. So, but staff very much appreciates a visit, an opportunity to talk. If you can make it, we greatly appreciate it. Are there any other amendments from board members and superintendent? If not, I guess I would like to read a little statement. Essentially, I'd like to thank the community for their support over the years and the trust that this board has placed on me to serve as board president for nearly twenty years. Uh, in that time, I've accomplished many positive items for the community. Opened high school, remodel of all buildings, added bus garage, district office. Had the rare privilege of serving on this board for nearly a third of the district's life. Also been able to sign diplomas for an entire generation of students. So, I very much am honored by that. Top priorities have been improving academic performance, hiring the best teachers and administration, many of which are our own alumni. Students have been recognized time and again for their academic achievement and exemplary behavior in the district and outside of the district. With building a strong base of governance, I hope that this board will continue the progress and performance that we have achieved. With that, I'd like to thank a couple of board members and the community for their support. I'll now start a new chapter of my life after forty years of public service. Wish you all well. Remember that if you need help or advice, only if I'll follow away, so thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you.
And I would like to say too, so I've served eighteen years on the board, and it's been the honor of a lifetime to be affiliated with such a remarkable group of people from the board members to the teachers to the support staff, everybody, the administration. It's been a pleasure and an honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from board members or superintendent?
Little favor. The longest tenure, so I'm more like twenty-four years. On the board, and I'm gonna talk about Howard first. The only thing that Howard doesn't, nobody knows about. We had huge construction projects, each of which had monumental issues, and Howard met every Monday morning to get those resolved at great advantage to the school district. I mean, it's, I mean, we had, one of the projects started four million dollars over a twenty-four million dollar budget, and we got our building without any material decrease in quality of what was promised, and it really was in large part to Howard's work, and it's really definitely an honor and privilege to serve with him. And Scott came in on the board, went, um, we had some pretty tough times on our board, and he just brought a level of stability, community respect. It really has been an honor to serve with both of you there. Yeah.
Okay. With that, I guess we'll move on to the next item. Which is the staff updated on our L E D lighting project from our building studio supervisor, Craig Green. Thanks.
Hello, Norah, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, great. Thanks for having me tonight. The company that did the lighting is N C L E D, and that company is out of Green Bay. And so they made the trek over every week to work on the buildings, relamping, putting new bulbs in since, um, January fourth, they started. And they started at the middle school and then started their way around the district. Um, they worked sixty hour a week, and then they took back off of Green Bay, so they do that on Thursdays. I got some figures from them of what they put in for fixtures as far as the amounts were concerned of fixtures that were replaced. They put in two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight fixtures. And they put in, um, three thousand seven hundred and sixty-six bulbs they replaced in fixtures that didn't, fixtures didn't need to be replaced. So, that's, that's quite a few fixtures, twenty-five hundred and thirty-eight and thirty-seven hundred and sixty-six bulbs. Uh, so, uh, that's, that's quite a few. Uh, they have one section left yet to do. It's in the auditorium at the high school. Uh, since there's so much going on at the auditorium, at this time, we are gonna put that off to the middle of June to do that. Uh, there is some lights that are extremely high up and behind the auditorium, and we need to get quite a machine in there to get up to that area to replace those bulbs and those fixtures. Uh, so that'll be done in June. I had Christine Bauer at the district office did an amazing job for me of getting a chart together of uh, what our payments have been to the electric company uh, so far, uh, since we started the project. It's too early to tell just how much we're saving exactly because of, uh, you know, you've got the Christmas vacation, and you got the spring break and things that are highs and lows within the month, so we don't have a good track record yet, but it, it's, it's going downward, and that's, and it's gonna keep going that way, I'm sure, so this project has certainly been worth the time to do, and that's about it.
Chris. So things are on track and on budget, then, Greg?
Uh, yes, we, uh, we only had one fixture that we had to have replaced uh, uh, because of a roof leak, and it came out. Uh, they replaced the fixture, and there was no charge for that. They just did it, and everything is on track, and we'll be finishing up in June, yes.
Any other questions from board members? Thanks, Greg.
Sure.
Thank you for the hard work, and thank you for the report, Greg.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which is our phone audit report from our business manager, Ken Clutchell, so.
So last fall, we contracted with a company called Telecom Fitness um, to go through all of our phone lines to determine if there was any savings, potential savings. As you can see, at the elementary school, they were able to move all ten of our lines to the State of Wisconsin plan, and also remove some fees that we were being charged at that facility, the elementary, for a savings of about fifty thousand dollars just for the one building. We're still working on, those changes happened in December, so all the switches have been made, and everything is running smoothly over there. Um, we're still working on the middle and high school at this time, but we have some projected savings. Um, we'll be able to move fifteen lines to the same State of Wisconsin Centurk Plan, which will save us about fifty-six hundred dollars between the middle and the high school. But we also had four lines that, with Greg sleuthing, we figured out years ago, when the district office had moved over to the high school, these lines were installed, and they were never removed after we had come back to the middle school. So, of course, that was when Darlene was still ahead of the district office. So, we are going to terminate those four lines because we're not using them, so that will save us some money as well. The final piece then is the long distance, which currently the contract, it's a contract with the state, and it's still on the governor's desk to be signed. So, once that goes through, we will also be able to switch our long distance. It'll still be with CenturyLink, but it'll just be on this new plan that the governor is signing, and that again will save us about five thousand dollars. So, all total with some one-time refunds and everything, we were looking at a savings of about sixty-four thousand.
Do they consider a voice-over I P internet solution?
We talked about that. They offered us that option for the middle and high school. Um, and after talking with Chad, we decided against that because currently, if one or the other is down, they're not both down. And if we were to do that, if the internet were down, then the phone lines would be down as well. And there would have been some additional savings. It wasn't a lot, maybe a couple thousand a year. But, yeah, we did look at that option as well. So, as part of the contract, uh, we, you may have noticed, I think it was last month, we had a check go out to this Telecom Fitness. That was for the elementary school, so you will be seeing one more check. They get half of the first-year savings, which is very common in that industry, and then anything over and above that is ours to keep.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity.
Did they find the four lines, or did Greg find the four lines?
Um, it was kind of a combination.
Okay.
So, they call, started calling all the lines, trying to figure out where, what they were for, and then and no, nobody answered. So, it was kind of in combination with, with Greg and Telecom Fitness that we figured that out.
Any questions for John? Answer this. And the saving, and thank you. The teachers. A lot of the savings look like they're coming out of A T and T, so.
Yes, yes.
I have A T and T in our hand, so. I've been quieting out on some issues for nearly a year now. Most satisfactory result, so.
Give them help.
That was the nice thing, that was the nice thing about coming with this company is they know all the ins and outs. So, me trying to call them and negotiate, I once have got half as far, you know? So, it's definitely a service to us to have them do it.
Any other questions or comments at this time? Item. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our financial report from our manager. Bank account balances as of March thirty-first, twenty-one. Citizen State Bank checking, one million one hundred nineteen thousand six hundred five dollars and ninety-four cents. Citizens Money Market, two million seven thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars forty-three cents. Citizen State Money Market Fund, forty-six, fifty-three dollars and six cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market Suicide Prevention Fund, sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents. For total bank account balances of three million one hundred forty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-five cents. The total bank account balances of three million one hundred forty-three thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-five cents.
Move to accept.
Ladies, there are a motion David's second. Jeff, we took the treasurer's report and it is presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, which consists of approval of our meeting minutes from our March fifteenth meeting, approval of our board learning minutes from April fifth, approval of the bi-monthly bills for April twenty-twenty-one, approval of resignations and retirements. Ben Lamb is our full-time middle school special ed teacher. Also Ben Lamb is our middle school assistant football coach. Courtney Hawkins is our full-time high school prom advisor. Also Ken Hoffmeyer, our six-hour elementary housekeeper. Sydney Canal is our full-time fourth grade teacher. Also approval of contract modifications and appointments. Our Tricia Longsdorf, our full-time elementary speech and language. Speech and language pathology. Callie Jordan is our full-time executive administrative assistant. Paulus Soderberg is our full, halftime assistant track coach, track and field coach. This time, and I don't see any corrective modifications at this time.
You accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
They have a motion Jeff's second, Deanne accepted consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, with that, we will move on to the next item, which is our administrative report, starting with our student enrollment update.
We have one thousand four hundred and ninety-three students in seats, up one from last month. Virtually our resident students, one hundred and fifty-seven are attending virtual school and open enrolled non-resident students, two hundred and seventy-three attending virtual school. For a total of four hundred and thirty students attending our virtual school. Again, two hundred and seventy-three open enrolled in the charter, virtual charter, as opposed to two hundred and one at this time last year. And then just to draw your attention, open enrollment is three hundred and seventy-four open enrolled students. Out one hundred and twenty-two for a net of two hundred and fifty-two to the positive. And lastly, just to draw your attention to the free reduced lunch rates crept up slowly to twenty-four percent as compared to the state average, thirty-seven and a half percent students in the average district. Free reduced lunch.
And do we have any sense of the local virtual students, if any, will go back to regular?
I don't believe we do at this time. We haven't done stuff, done a survey or anything like that. We thought there would be more in semester time, I think there was six.
If you're building the book, it'd be nice to know if we need a third grade teacher or whatever.
It's like steps online, would you have any comments?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So we have done a survey and there is a large chunk of students that will be returning to the buildings. It looks as though we will have about two hundred kids committed to coming back to the virtual program, which puts us more at typical numbers like from twenty nineteen, twenty school year. So it does look like many of the kids that came to us for COVID reasons will be returning either to their resident districts or like I said, back to our buildings for fall. So we are working with those families, trying to coordinate the eighth graders meeting at the high school for transition day, working with the elementary so that they're aware of which families will be coming back for staffing purposes. So we do have most of that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we have any other questions with regards to the student enrollment update? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is a report card preview presentation from our director.
Yes.
Now, I went over this next and I need an explanation for you on this because I found it rather confusing.
So with this as a all of this, every year we're given state report cards. Except for this year, we denied state report card because of no assessments given last spring. But throughout the course of last year, already fired COVID and then continued through the spring and summer. EPI was looking at pre-vacation report card. It was often cumbersome and confusing and unusual for districts, even though a lot of times we're into it. And furthermore, public not understanding how to read and interpret these sites is for a reason. So they spent a lot of time, surveys, asking questions and giving examples to where they have reached. Example, they presented this year called creating local state report card should not be public release. It used data from two thousand eighteen and nineteen, so two years ago. We already had a report card on that, of course. Their articulation is on the wall already there for eighteen, nineteen. It was simply for our review of the administrative team based on what we thought and provide feedback. And as they want to finalize what it's going to look like. My role here tonight is just to try to give a general explanation. Honestly, however, again, I can't explain all the detail that I've lived in that, you know, in terms of new, the new calculations and how they're doing that. But we're going through many discussions with case eleven personnel who don't know the content. So the process of repurposing these people reports and then key ones. Is these people reports will come from the state report card. For next year, we'll have a report card on this year. We're currently against state testing. We have our aspire tomorrow at the high school and we're finally moving forward as well. So we've done a great job on the same person for counselors and building leaders, coordinating them, our teachers and others administering them as on the digital world. But the purpose relates to simplify variables and reduce the tax. To make reports more usable for stakeholders. Here's the data, I'll be able to use that for decision making. The rate of equity with target groups. We will hear opposing gaps very often in the state report card for higher groups. Intent is filled with closed gaps, but then titled in celebration of the case of birth. Just to note other words again, full district people reports are not report cards. So what we received in the NABIT is not a report card. It's not released publicly. They used two-year data from two years ago and there weren't even scores or ratings given. That wasn't the intent. The intent was for us to review it, see if it is better for the purposes of continuous improvement and provisionals. They want to make it as easy as possible for the public eye to be able to understand what data has been collected, how to celebrate our district, potential areas of growth. But most things changed, I'm sorry, most things haven't changed, but what has? The extensive use of phone bar graphs. Research has shown that people want to see and extrapolate right now. They don't want to read and try to figure out, they want to visually see the color and nice shapes. They want to be quick. Opposing gaps has changed to target group outcomes. I'll explain that further, but it's really what's our most needed is collection of students as opposed to group. When I say group, students with, English as a second language, students identified with a disability, students of a different race. It's now a collective, collection of students, meaning it could be any student. That needs us, we'll explain it more a little bit. Then absenteeism as opposed to being adopted points, it's changed the students regularly attending. That matches with federal accountability on a PES report. It used to be two different measurements, which made more than. It changes, so now that it lines up and again, it's fine and warm moves. There is a link on here, a very next crosswalk back. What that crosswalk does is takes our old report card and walks it with the new report card. So I encourage you to take a look at this if you're interested. I will go more into that next fall, of course, more in deep depth of this too. When we get our report card and then walk through this together and then even forward, obviously. So they've given things like this preview reports at a glance. Some very super easy to see, but some, some things they've added is an opportunity for us as a district and some language about who we have. The first paragraph up top, number one was never there. It's about us to speak about what is St. Crescental versus Hammond and Roberts's community is what makes our district special. Of course, it keeps our demographics, the targeted areas are very evident, student achievement, target groups, growth and on track for graduation. And as you can see, just the visual pieces of it. This is all available as well on the DCA website. I'm just trying to summarize this, bring it to you a little bit in a shorter version. Again, the data at a glance. What, what makes up our data before in the ACT aspire, the DLM is a test that they're going through right now this spring with different grade levels. How many years back are the attendance goals, a few years back? You come, you look into economically disadvantaged percentage and that changes the weighting. I can explain that a little bit if you get into this further. Again, this is just some nice documents for you to be able to preview. Get a feel for what it's like. So our front page again will look like this. Demographics, visual representation, there's four prioritators, which I already stated, some achievements, some schools roll, target group outcome and on track for graduation. And we get five reports here, one per building and includes a virtual as a building and then overall as a district. So each school has their own report card that they go through this. They're speaking in general to the district, each school does the same. Again, public is our primary audience, trying to make it very understandable. Those of you who have maybe spent time on the previous ones, if you recall, they're on the numbers or NAs because of school size. So you didn't even apply and just again, cumbersome, just trying to interpret that data. This is what it used to look like. Well, no, word of it's student achievement. Used to be in some numbers, now again, it's in that elementary bar graph. The gray underneath the bar graph is a tape comparison, so it's still being compared to other districts of our size or of similar grade. So there are school districts that are applying follow school, because there were of course a poor case for. Right, there's different districts, there's nine, twelve school districts, there's K eight, there's K five. So that takes into account more comparing, tries to keep it as apples to apples as much as possible. So that we can potentially learn from other districts in terms of their success, what they can work with us. Or how we're being successful now. There is weighting based on the number of economically disadvantaged, disadvantaged students. Achievement, growth, target group outcomes and on track for graduation. The higher your economic, economically disadvantaged student base, the more your report card focuses on growth. Not everybody has the same starting point. So they want to see growth as opposed to necessarily your, your, potentially being on achievement. So there's a calculator that's available again on the DCA website. Simply click on your number and you can see that graph shift based on the higher or lower amount you roll. Us being a district with not a high ECD, ours is more focused on achievement. The expectations are that you achieve and based on potentially the backgrounds or the setting that you're in. They use free reduced lunch.
That, that's how they determine economics.
For, and we're always, for some reason, we're waiting for a little behavior and community. And maybe it'll be different after this year. So one of the first targeted areas is student achievement. Student achievement demonstrates that knowledge scales a team compared against state academic standards, the LA and that. There's all changes to the calculation, hopefully go compared to similar grade and across the state. So we have a video of this is much different. It gives our demographics, it gives percentages there. Some of this information is not actually wrapped up into the score, but it's still available for us to use. And I intentionally high-fly overview here because again, we, we can't even look at our own data. We get it to the volume, we'll be using our own data and it'll be much more senseless. This particular graph demonstrates three years in a row, and just to point out, for instance, you would want more purple and more blue growth because that shows advanced and proficient. So this school district, a fictitional one provided by the EPI is going wrongly. More students are becoming basic and below basic, but that's very evident, very obvious. If you take a look at the old report card, you would have to try to figure that out and create your own visual if you want, or just spend more time looking at the numbers. The bottom graphic here is again a student cell group and breaking it down by group. So you can see how your different groups are doing based on race, based on disability, based on economically disadvantaged. Student growth, so there's demographic breakdown up top. And that's for informational purposes only. But growth compared to value at a statewide normal three-point oh is what's key here. So on this dock, you see this grayish line in the middle where school districts want to be is above that line. That's a three-point oh. And what it shows is that this district is doing very well in that matters. Their students are achieving more than rejected. So try and put that in your minds more concrete. Third grade, students take their first assessment. They're predicted how well they should do in fourth grade. They come back and take it in fourth grade. Right, then they take that information and they show our, is our curriculum, is our materials, is our standards we're teaching to and how our staff teaches, the value added goes above that projection. So if you have a greater value added, we're going above what students projected to learn. And then, and I can share that's quite typical here in St. Crescental, at least a great school district, particularly above the average. On the left-hand side, you can see this, it is below that average. So that would show that kids are not really going to them, reaching that data, reaching that point of proficiency that they would be projected to. And this is fictitional, not St. Crescental, be very clear.
Wait, so based upon, based upon the score in third grade, there's some sort of algorithm that gives you a projected number and then in fourth grade, you are, you are graded against that? I mean, how do you get, how do you get the gray line based upon last year's score?
It's a three-point oh for the entire state. It's one, yeah, out of our, yeah, the end.
I understood, well, three-five, I understood that it is now seventy-six and I've been watching that.
So yeah, that's a state norm there.
It's like a sex ladder. Okay, so, okay, I, I have something to say, like this one, it's worth it with some algorithm, it gives you the gray line, I want to project it.
This is just another visual. This actually goes by student groups. So again, this fictitional school has a language arts average of three-point seven, so very good. So they involve the norm, but then you can see by student group, the white students in this band are actually not meeting for government growth. Right, we could obviously use the data and say, okay, we have a group of students for some reason are not reaching where they should be. Where we have other groups, non-economically disadvantaged or economically disadvantaged, or the black students, they're going far plus. What are we doing with those students, their potential? And if you take a look at the left, that's what the data used to look like, not as user-friendly and apparent for the first. Target group, group outcomes, again, the best way to state this in the media report card. So in the past, you had to have twenty students per, at least a minimum of twenty students per every sub-group or student group to even be counted in the data. For a school district our size or smaller, you can imagine how hard that is. Right, and now all of a sudden that group isn't counted and we don't know how to impact them because it is a problem. And the reason that is, is because if you have too small a sample size, you can find out exactly what you're getting, what score. And it's, it's not all right. So now what they've said, we got all our students taking these assessments. Now it's your bottom twenty-five percent, your bottom quartile. It doesn't matter where you come from, what your label is, in fact, there is no varied weighting to this because it doesn't matter. It's now whatever that bottom twenty-five percentile, wherever that can shift from year to year, right, terms of success or lack of success. That's your target group you're going on with. We don't have one in our elementary, one in our middle, one in our virtual, one in our high school, in the district. So we have five different target groups. You can imagine how powerful that is to really know what exact students are the ones that we need work with as a whole system. Our students with visibility have a low score, all of them. Um, our students with visibility have a low score, all of them must be struggling, or that's not necessarily true. Right? So now it's that, that collective group, so this is one change, that's been applauded, um, as we throw this in the data. Um, well, this was a master work through, um, compared in the past, and St. Crescent will be small and have a lot of NAs. So they didn't matter, we couldn't even dig really deep into those different groups. Whether it was English, Spanish, Latin language, whether it was special education, based on, we're hearing the group on groups. This will be very. So it's based on performance rather than demographics, their bottom twenty five percent. And, um, there may be slightly different groups within each district. But on track to graduation, what that is, is there's different milestones used. Third grade LA, eighth grade math and attendance, and then graduation of the high schools. Those are different milestones used for success from graduation. This is an elementary example, um, they won't have eighth grade now, right? But it is breaking, so the report cards are different based on what they have. Um, or the district, of course, will have everything, because we have third grade, eighth grade, the attendance and the graduation rate for a district report card. Again, students regularly attending now is based on the ninety percent. Over the three years, how many students are attending greater than ninety percent? That's the federal use for ESSO, now it's our state. Again, data is a little bit more usable in our state.
I think we have. No, teacher days are like a hundred and eighty. Student days are less now because we don't mean on Fridays, but the kid misses twenty days, then there would be. Is a black mark against graduation because they've missed more than thirty percent of the school. Apparently, we just had a percentage of students that have not that rate of ninety percent. And our answer is that they're historically, they're not. They.
What they've added are two different things now, these are for informational only. Um, they will not be in our score, but I think this is really good information, this is full secondary preparation. Student group levels, uh, data compared to the state, this is high school level, near ninth and twelve. It flows from prior years, winter, Davis, Hamshott. So what this manages might be kind of hard to see, but the number of students in advanced placement, the number of students in dual enrollment, industry registry, uh, recognized credentials. And work based on a lot of our CTE area, right, uh, besides the advanced placement. But what this does is compare to other school districts, your size, or demographics, the percentage of students participating. And it breaks it down by, again, um, race, uh, by economically disadvantaged, et cetera. And the purpose of this, and this one as well, is arts course information, arts and design, dance, music, theater. Is for us of the district to potentially recognize are there inequity, um, or holes that we maybe didn't see in these two areas. Because if we're seeing, uh, very, very little involvement from a particular subgroups or subgroups in our advanced planning places, or in our CT, or in these groups. Is there some potential barrier that we weren't aware of, or, um, there more support needed to include these different groups? Or should we be offering them? So this is informational, which is not gold, again, for, um, this for overall.
Are, are those impacted at all just based on the district size? As well?
Yes.
Like that's considered.
Well, what this might lead to, Brian, imagine is that if we're seeing our, uh, let's just, they kill enrollment, for that is really low. Or we're seeing the district similar size really high, now we're allowed to get in conversation, right, or we know this school district, hey, let's talk and see what are they doing. So again, this is all, almost all that information available on the DCA website, you know, we hear right next fall, we get the report card. Um, after a few months of school starting, they take all the assessments and information, put it all together. Of course, all of you are aware, um, this data, um, sometimes they're called an autopsy. Our autopsy data, right, go backwards and it's information you can, you can use on a limited basis. Right? But seeing trends is important, seeing some pool is important. What's most important is what our building leaders, what our teachers, what our, um, individually using every day. The formative, the formative information, the progress monitoring, the interim assessments of them, they're using that on spot. And moving forward off of that information, that's live and very useful. This is good, this is important, and we'll celebrate it and we'll use it to its value as well, um, because it is important. But we're also aware of the fact that it's last year's group of students and some are gone now and some are in different areas, so. Just to keep that in perspective. And you've seen on the wall, historically, we do really, very well, and I'm sure it'll continue. Any questions regarding?
Did I answer any questions already? Still have some?
I still have a question.
Okay, alright.
Wow. In the past, we've done well on, uh, graduation rates, we've done well on student achievement. The thing we usually are dinged on, our student growth and closing the gaps. And one of the reasons we would get dinged on that is because. The gap for the most part. From our poorest students or best students is, uh, so narrow. And so therefore, to make a small incremental change, didn't really affect our score and oftentimes it damaged our score. Decreased our score from what it should actually be. Has their changes in how they report this, will that help us in that reporting? Or are there still going to be penalties because we don't have as large a gap between our students? Therefore, we're not showing that growth and performance as other districts.
That's a fair question, my first thought is no, because again, states getting away from the gaps of comparing demographics. It's simply everybody's in one big pot and whoever that quartile, that bottom quartile is, we need to support every one of those students. They still have information provided on each demographic, but it's not that good at school. But that's my, my first answer is, as I understand it now, no, it does not hurt us from a score perspective. But we'll still get that information, we'll be able to fill work, whether it's different divided groups, or that possibility of everybody on the same together.
And that crosswalk or cross talk or whatever it is between previous data and this new s- system that they have. Will that allow us to compare past results to future results better? Or are we throwing the baby out with the bath water again and we have to start over again?
Answer to this question, Howard, obviously we don't have data from last year, right, since we have some this year's data, the lack of better term will be quite skewed. Um, because of in and out and, and just more students virtually, we just did a lot of uncontrols with that. Um, for the weeks, making things, um, tighter, um, in terms of what we're teaching. Uh, so next year's data, Howard, and then even next year, um, as that year progresses, not even sure, um, what that could bring. So answer your question, I don't think we're throwing out the past, but it's going to be really hard to correlate the last few years, in my opinion. And I'm sure it won't be very hard at holiday try to do that, people that are much smarter than, than I am, um, massing this. I don't know that the crosswalk necessarily addresses that, it just addresses what's been taken off and what's been added.
You know, it's, it's an old argument that I had with an old state senator, is, um, asking them to leave their hands off the, uh, state assessments. To allow us enough time to, um, see where we were at, to make the improvements that were needed. And his answer came back, is they just can't help us. So they have to integrate their political, uh, views and political positions into supposedly a non-political assessment of our students. It's very frustrating when you're looking to develop programs to improve the student achievement and. Achieve graduation for all our students, so.
Personally, I think there will be, we'll be able to connect some things from the, from the team, right, so. Twenty twenty one, we have a full year of this there, and like I said, all the other. All the other variables are going to play. We'll try and connect and keep building on things we had already adjusted because of.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, it's just putting it in the spotlight for a personal opinion, better tool, same, worse tool, first impression.
First impressions, uh, again, being probably a very visual guide too, I do like that it's very easy to pull the data right now, just trying to. Just trying to understand how we're going to come from. Um, like I said, on the segment, oh, we built our work cards for parents, we don't put the exact standard language right out of the common core. You know, uh, what, we try to make it, I can, right, a very simple, simple, straightforward, I think that's what they use here. I do also like the target group. Um, I think it wasn't right to maybe disprove people that really needed support, but because they improved and showed in the data, for example, sample size. Or because they fit the demographic that showed the most, they were somewhat lost in that show. So first, uh, parents in the first working group, I do think it is, it would be more helpful.
Well, I'm hoping things get easier, so I know we just proved the new revision of the mathematics, state standards. I don't know, I think you and several of the Matthews just had a chance to look that over. Prior, we're waiting for final approval from the state superintendent on the adoption of that, but. I think, uh, there's a lot of potential, a lot of improvement in how it's taught, how it's, uh, what is expected. It doesn't teach just one way, beg on the moral to speculate an answer to a problem. It incorporates the old way that I learned how to do math, the new way that a lot of the kids know. The standards seem to look more at getting the right answer than less is how you get it.
Well, I'm Howard, again, thank you for your work for many years, um, taking us to inter revisions, you're always very good about sharing the process with me. And I'm able to share it with the teachers and the right people, and we have many teachers that spend time looking through those and sharing opinions and thoughts and communicating using the avenues that were built. Um, so that was always really nice to get that from you, your time committed to that, very appreciative. So that we can involve our teachers, we can do a teacher that are passionate about making sure those standards are good and accurate and giving better for the students and for them trying to deliver them. Thank you.
If my impression from this report card, it is looking in the rearview mirror quite a ways back. And our teachers aren't waiting for this report card to identify a kid, they know today which kids need help. And I think that's the whole standard based assessment, and they know every kid, what they need. So I, I think it's nice, you know, we can compare ourselves, but I don't know how useful this is for the teacher and the classroom.
And so remember that preview report that they built for us was on eighteen ninety data, of course, next year's report card will be on this new data, which is still working there. I think for we have some negative team, again, it wasn't a big picture, right, especially with trans. They, they really need to really look at something or look at how we're instructing, um, or the materials we're using to support. But yes, again, the work that our, our teachers and we need to do with data day, it is way more important than, than first data, it's constant.
Well, yeah.
Any other questions for Dan? Thank you. Look forward to seeing you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is very student staff and community recognition. Brian?
Uh, Gabe Styler and Maya Kaiser, uh, recognition, uh, for their success in both the classroom and athletics. Gabe and Maya are the twenty twenty one, uh, St. Crescent representatives, representatives as a middle border scholar athlete of the year. They both represented our school of class boys and dignity as they gave their speeches during our scholar athlete ceremony, thank you and congratulations. Uh, Melanie Newman, Alyssa Benzer, Theatres and Rosalyn Stop, Stopmything. Want to recognize your dedication and hard work and production and direction of the elementary school production of the Winnie the Pooh kid. The virtual production was entertaining and I appreciate the difficulty in running such a play under pandemic conditions, thank you for your hard work. Gas and crew of the elementary school production of Winnie the Pooh kids. Wanted to recognize your talent and hard work in the virtual production of Winnie the Pooh kids, it was very entertaining and your talent showed. Josh Baird, Tatum Holzer, David Olson, Devin Wosley, Noah Newsbaum, Parker Shackleton, T. Holzer and Owen Wosley. Congratulations on being selected to the Wisconsin Wrestling Coach Association Academic All-State Team, keep up the great work. And thank you for everybody that submitted.
Congratulations to all those, uh, recognized and thank you to those that submitted, uh, those, uh, recognition. So, keep up the good work. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is discussion, discussion regarding the preliminary budget for twenty twenty one, twenty.
Yes. I'll have a shout out thirteen aid in front of you, that was not approved in the program package. Um, these numbers are preliminary, so I think nothing has been settled yet at the state level as far as what our funding will be for next year. So I have gone by what DPI is proposing to put together the preliminary budget for tonight. So for revenues, we have our three year rolling average, all from one thousand six oh nine to one thousand six twenty four. And we're estimating it at ten thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per student. So that is a hundred and fifty dollar per student increase from twenty twenty one. That also assumes that we will have fifty three summer FTE this summer. As you know, with COVID last summer, our summer school was very limited. So fifteen, the FTE was what we had in the summer of twenty nineteen. We are assuming flat September enrollment. So that will add just shy of four hundred thousand dollars to our overall budget. Our per pupil adjustment aid is remaining the same at seven hundred and forty two dollars per student. But our FTE again will increase from that sixteen oh nine to sixteen twenty four, so it'll give us a little bit more. We're also anticipating flat open enrollment in. So we had some conversations, um, with Stephanie about this, because of course, a large part of our open enrollment is the virtual school. And we're hoping that with some changes within that program, we can accept more special ed students that we're currently having to deny. So we're anticipating the same number of students for next year. And then just increasing that amount as to an estimated three hundred and fifty dollars.
Overall district students.
Yes. We receive more money for each special ed student than we do for a regular ed student. And my numbers, I always base it on what those regular ed numbers are. So the eighty one twenty five that you're seeing there, that's for a regular educational student. A special ed student is over twelve thousand. So I just kind of lumped them all together to say, okay, if we can get more special ed students and we don't really need as many. But as a whole, we're anticipating that number that remains.
Here's a question that I would have is if we're getting twelve thousand. The reimbursement, what, what is the actual cost, are we looking to exceed that cost?
From what I've heard, and Stephanie maybe can speak to this a little bit more as well, is that most of them are. Their speech and language services mostly. And I don't know, pretty clear, is that correct?
Correct, so we share our speech and language right now with the middle school, so not enough hours in the school. Other than a lot of what we're doing, we're going to teach them. We could be having that.
So it's not a high additional cost for those students. DPI's proposal also included an increase in the special ed categorical aid. So it's running right around thirty percent reimbursement on all of our special education expenses. And DPI's proposal is to increase that to thirty five percent reimbursement. In the model, we also assumed a one percent increase in revenues, all other local revenues, it's a fairly small amount, less than five thousand dollars. And our five year equalized value average is currently sitting at eight point eight percent. So when I calculated the mill rate, I did bump that up to eight percent. In the past, we have been using seven. But I felt like eight was kind of closer to our five year average. Then we also have our fund thirty eight and thirty nine, um, levies. And we, this budget estimates that that fund thirty nine levy will remain the same. So if you remember, last year, we prepaid over a million dollars worth of debt and we also refinanced. So if you remember last year, we prepaid over a million dollars worth of debt and we also refinanced almost twenty million dollars worth of debt. So our actual fund thirty-nine debt service payments that are due are decreasing significantly. But in order to keep our mill rates stable, we are planning to go ahead and levy about two point nine million additional repayment of debt. So overall for revenues, that'll give us about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Any questions on the revenue side? If we move on to the expenditures, we had a couple of positions that we added during the twenty twenty-one fiscal year uh, that were not budgeted for. One of them was a seven and a half hour period that started in January. And then we also are influencing the five and a half hour grounds crew position to an eight hour position. We are adding a point five high school sped teacher. Currently, twelve person is split between virtual and high school sped. And so she, her position will become a one FTE and then there'll be another one to fill in that other path to the high school. We also had some savings from retirements this year, so you can see that number there. Um, but then we also had to add some for our local retirement benefit. About fifty-four thousand. Two percent wage increase for all staff will run just shy of two hundred and sixty thousand. The CPI for July first is one point two three percent. And this is assuming a two percent increase, as has been the board's past practice. We're in the second year of our contract with Health Partners. So we're anticipating an eleven percent increase starting in January for health insurance premiums. We're hoping that we can negotiate with them again, um, for another three-year contract and maybe we can get that down a little bit. I'll have to see our claims that is coming out that time. And then, of course, we always assume a small increase for dental insurance. And with Saxon Retirement FICA and our four oh three B, even though they're the same percentages, that amount increases because of the higher salaries. Our other object series, you can see there that we will also be making that prepayment of debt for the mill rate stability. I do have in here that we're going to increase our utility budget by two percent. And that might be counterintuitive because we just put in a bunch of new lighting. Um, but remember, we also have that lease payment in there, so I'm kind of working with that. And we have seen an increase in our gas prices for heating. We have ten thousand set aside, so if we do have some classroom supply budgets that need a little extra, we have a little um, spot there where we can take that from. And then we have our reduced telephone expense. I did not figure any of those one-time expenditures. Um, so that's how I came up with the fifty-seven thousand, because some of those costs were only on one-time savings. Brian ordered four new buses. So we are looking at yearly lease payments of almost eighty-seven thousand. I did not put that in this budget. Um, we are able to defer that first payment until August of twenty-two, if we want to do that. Um, but as more things come in and we know our funding, we might be able to get that in for this year. Or we can defer it to next year. We had to let them know by March thirty-first so that we could get special placement on those buses. And then extra, was it that they threw in the five-year lease for no cost or the five-year maintenance contract? Trying to remember what Brian said.
I don't remember.
I think they threw in a five-year maintenance contract.
It was late.
Okay, yeah.
Those, those are replacement buses or buses also in addition to.
So you can ask before.
Once you three out of the sleep, they, um, Brian's also working with them on, on, um, they're botched, they're stalling for us, you know, but they will be taking three buses out of sleep for sure. So they'll be pointing at least three of them.
Okay, and the fourth one will be yours.
Truth.
We're adding twenty-five thousand dollars into the budget, um, to the IT budget to provide upgraded Chromebooks for the teaching staff. That will be a yearly cost, so we will add that in and that will stay in the IT budget. And then we have approximately hundred and fifty thousand for our fund balance to try to maintain seventeen percent. If you remember last fall, when we set this news budget, we were only able to set aside sixty-five thousand to go toward our fund balance. So our fund balance percentage, if that holds true, will be dropping. So we may need a plan to get that back up to, um, seventeen percent.
Well, that is.
We should have a rubber on.
Kind of important because it's, it's got the cost involved. Because our district has been so historically strong, we've got a much better rate in the market. I mean, like, ten percent of it, which is millions over the life of the launch.
Right. Yes, the board policy states that we keep it between seventeen and nineteen percent. And if it drops below fifteen percent, then we have to come up with a plan to increase it back to the target rate. So we will not be as low as fifteen, but I still think it's very prudent to increase it back up to that seventeen percent. So the only other piece on there then is the open enrollment. So you can see that we're pretty close on our revenues and expenditures, um, with those items. And again, that does not include the bus lease for this year. Um, and I assume it's referring that. I included the revenue in that worksheet because I just wanted to show you. Um, on the second page, how even with keeping in almost two point nine million for prepayment of debt, with an eight percent increase in our equalized values, our mill rate still will be dropping a little bit. Right now, we're on ten dollars in shady spends, I believe. And it will be about nine ninety-two estimated. And of course, that will depend on exactly our blessed values coming. And then the final sheet is just kind of a summary of what we went over on the first couple pages. Any particular questions?
So in the past, as we finish the fiscal year, we might have excess money that we need to pay for the retirement, to relieve the budget next year. This year, we have a boss, we could pay, you know, bus leases that we could pay this year. Or we could set some money aside for this, a reserve.
Yeah, and I feel like what's probably going to happen is we're we're going to need to put it all into our fund balance to try to maintain that as close as we can to the seventeen percent.
But we've already, I mean, this budget doesn't assume any payments from this year to take the branch of to pay off next year's items, which we've been able to do in the past.
We have. Last summer, I believe it was about seventy thousand that we funneled from to prepay some local retirement benefit to free up some money. Um, but again, with usually having to set aside about a hundred and fifty thousand for fund balance and only having sixty-five that's built into the budget, I'm not sure how much wiggle room we're going to have. I'm thinking it's going to be false.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dan? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Just consideration of first reading of board policy six six one point three, non-fission fund checks. Everybody's had a chance to look at the proposed policy and compare that with the current policy.
I didn't think anything wrong with current policy when I looked at the two. That was less wooden and just says appropriate. That was my thing.
What's the purpose of the thing?
I think it spells out process a little clearer.
And is this part of the manual that we've been trying to correct the lines through? So the school association published the, um, it's the mother of all board policy books. That cross references the legal statutes as supported. And the goal was over time that we would conform to that because it's easier to get questions answered in a lot of school districts.
Yeah. The new policy to me spelled out a, uh, clearly spelled out a policy of, if there if we're put in a position of non-collection of funds, how do we proceed? I think that is, it wasn't spelled out in the old policy. It is spelled out in this one.
Ted, is this a issue? Do we have many interceptors?
It varies from year to year, really mostly dependent upon the economy.
And it's food.
Payments, Washington DC trip payments, all sorts of things. Um, we do use the policies as kind of our guidebook. So I think it would be nice to have something that spelled it out a little bit more.
Do we need a motion or anything or just?
Any changes or anything to this policy? And outstanding first reading.
No question. Procedurally, it's fine with the transition on the board, first reading, second reading with different members. Just more, I guess, a question.
Yeah.
I was assuming.
The board has to have a first reading.
The board is the reference of what.
There's a quick, the second reading, and there's changes to that policy by the board numbers, or it will have to be taken back. Okay, uh, then we will move on to the next item, which is consideration of approval of the DPI district flexibility application and board resolution.
As you were, you know, last fall notified, you're notified that, you know, there's a four-page document of district flexibility and that we could apply. And, um, many districts like us chose to just wait and see kind of what happened, but, uh, we're comfortable. The only waiver we're going to ask for is, is the hours of instruction. Um, so that, uh, the other requirement is that, um, if the board passed a resolution, that'd be held at a public meeting. This resolution and this action hereby by the board tonight would satisfy all those requirements. And then we submit this to the public construction. Just need to, uh, consider this motion accepted by our board and Joe.
Joe, second, Kirk. Adopt the school board resolution for the waiver of a certain, uh, full board or full district requirement. It's going to be the Wisconsin State Statute one eight two point three eight. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the adoption of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to the next item. Which is consideration of approval of the summer school COVID nineteen mitigation plan. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review that before the meeting.
Blitzy and I are the coordinators of the summer school program, Ken McDaniel with it too. Um, it is very nice to be planning a full-scale, flexible, get it in two years now. Um, and what I mean by a full-scale summer school plan is full June session, which is a three-week, five days a week. Um, morning session where we offer academics and exploring classes. K E D, um, and in the high school have a variety of, um, fitness classes and, um, videos and exploring classes. And then some remedial academics for students that will need it for dancing purposes. Um, come July, we have our swimming lessons again, which we'll talk about here. The plan again is to go to Elsworth, um, to their pool and use their uh, layout, I guess, is how I would put it in terms of what they propose to us, make it happen. And then a two-week session in August, which is strictly focused on academics, kind of a booster, um, for the kids that need it the most to get ready for the fall. Uh, so it's a quick overview of what our planning is. I think it's time specifically, we're going to focus on the safety side of things, um, and how we're going to operate. I don't know if we need to go through every step of it, but highlight the differences between what are currently in place and what our plan is, uh, for the summer.
Yep, so this was taken from our initial one, um, last year for the whole district. So like Ken said, not many differences. Um, our goal is to provide summer school, unlike last year, we didn't get to, so that's going to save us some possible. Um, we feel very strongly about, um, obviously the safety, but number two as well, education, our students and the social emotional wellness. Um, we've seen changes in that over the last year. Um, still have the same commitments as we did last year. Um, our operations haven't really changed. Um, still not requiring temperature checks, that we changed to six feet to three feet. Um, nothing actually changed here. Um, continued cleaning daily weekly, that's just a good practice regardless of the time. Um, hand hygiene, these things don't change.
Oh, the, no, I was just going to say, the entire administration team, Blitzy and I, please, simply, and more so than anybody, I think, has to look around at some of our jobs. So that's why I think Blitzy and I go home.
Uh, the nursing practices are not going to change. Um, she worked very closely with St. Croix, St. Croix on health. Um, here's where a couple of things start to change a little bit. Um, our visitors will still limit, um, this summer, but, um, we are, the administration team is coming to with a recommendation that's, um, is massively optional for staff and students starting for summer school. Um, our hours of operation for summer school are eight, between eight and hour forty-five at the elementary school. People will be in the building from six to six because we are often kids here as well before. And then after, um, summer school, after elementary school.
And actually, just this afternoon, um, the YMCA Hudson confirmed on their. confirmed on their end that they'll be able to start back up, um. The quick history of that is the Y has always worked at middle school and also provided teen center. And they had a poll, polled range early when COVID began last spring. Um, but they, they would like to get started again, and they actually are gonna provide, um, I guess, free of charge for our students, the bill will come, Dr. Jim. Um, but we got a contract for the Y for years now, and there's an agreement between us and them for what they bring. Um, technically for after-school programming, but they've also done some tool programming. So they're gonna do that again this June until, from eleven forty-five until three o'clock, which is awesome.
What do the staff feel about optional masks?
So that is, it's been a um, what's the word I'm looking for, not, not, um, not formal feedback, it's been indirect and conversations. The reason why we're moving to that, to tell you, I mean, just to give you a big picture, conversations, Jeff, where we started with this probably a month ago and our admin team, and then Lacy and I kind of having conversations with staff and both those staff members that are either have already raised their hand or are probably want to raise their hand. Um, it's a beginning transition back into what we hope eventually will be that optional, um, view as we go down the road. Summer school gives that opportunity where it's optional for one, the second part of the, a large number of our classes will be outdoors. And, um, the, those that are indoors, specifically the academic sections, are smaller.
And the teachers that get hired for the summer will know that that's the policy.
Correct. Raise your hand. Yep, and those are kind of the informal conversations that we kind of had. Actually, after this, this wraps up, whichever, whatever, you know, you guys decide, um, then it'll be more formal commitments. This is where we're headed.
So some things that we're talking about, uh, work, the data's getting shared. June sometime is the next estimate for herd immunity or the US population in Wisconsin's trending slightly ahead, so. Unless something changes, the science would.
Make sure the people who research those are.
Without any, people that, it impacts, are okay with this.
Yep, all that's playing into it, um. The, the, the fact that every single set pepper, should be at all sites. Everyone, our industry set members that work at summer school, and now that the option of vaccination will be beyond that, the two-week, you know, the buck will go there, well. Are they outside, you know, too, no, so it's all industry same.
Um, we're just talks, uh, talked about this, so we will go through the end of the year, um, with our masks, but then starting that Monday would be optional. Um, transportation, and, uh, during the summer, we have minimal routes to begin with. Um, we only run from high school, middle school, and licensed teachers. Um, typically, we have molds, our thirty percent drop off pick-up anyways, um, and that if you're on the Y. Uh, they'll still have assigned seats, that's something we've learned from all this, it helps just in general, uh, buses. Um, these coveries are optional and then buses will be. Again, that's normal. Uh, this is our instructional model, we are traditional, uh, one, the current students are with one teacher for the entire morning, and then grades one through eight will have three different classes throughout the morning. Um, so a little less school boarding, um, as we're doing now, but we just feel that's important, start moving towards. Um.
We should mention there, like, it might probably have been, the kid around her skin around their own. Um, our first and second graders are paired together, so all of our classes, if you're first, second grade, will be strictly who you'd be with, and the third, fourth, and our middle schoolers. Our middle school is our five-eight, but, um, almost without exceptions. Generally, fifth and sixth graders, that are in tenders with your specific date, but not as many.
Um, you just assumed my lesson, as chance, that we're to, we use the Elsworth pool, so we're following, um, their policy for summer. Um, masks won't be required, classrooms will be available as normal. Um, and the students and instructors should be in the water with, in the six feet of each other. Um, and their public health approved that, so we will follow those guidelines. First, we have some data in July.
There are three time slots in the view that have any children swim before, there's three different time slots. If parents want to transport around their own, that's always been an option, you can do that, and then that'll happen afterwards, um, those that don't want to take advantage of that or can't, and they have our kids, or they have us, us in their kids, um, they'll be outside for those other two time slots. So they are in, in Elsworth, will be outdoors, um, obviously except for poor weather, but.
And then we don't go.
Yeah, and we don't go anywhere, so.
You know, just our communication plan, um, depending on your decision as a board, people communicate as clearly as tonight or tomorrow morning, um.
Tomorrow.
Um, and then all of ours will show the avenues, um, and then we will continue to, there's a weekly meeting, I would say, for control, also. Any questions for us?
I, I, I don't know what the county health department's opinion is on, you know, when you're inside, having masks optional with kids. I mean, do they, have they weighed in on this?
I'm not sure that they have, um. Tim, I'll go on to speak, and I mentioned, you know, we were really surprised that. Maybe that's why we're in conversation in there, I think that.
It's all collaborative, it appears the majority of local school districts are already committed to optional for masks in the summer school or bring it to the boards like us tonight, so. Majority are transitioning.
Based on the way we're becoming correct.
Any questions? Thank you for your hard work, and it looks like, uh, trying to transport some sense of urgency. The hope that continues, so. I guess we need a motion that will prove this mitigation plan for our summer school. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, motion Kirk second, Brian, to approve the proposed summer school COVID nineteen mitigation plan. Were any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we have David and a couple of backup.
Others are still.
Okay. With that, we'll move on. Excuse me. Move into the other business. There are a couple of, uh, items that I'd like to cover on the other. First, to save the date, uh, for the May fifth, uh, staff appreciation breakfast. Uh, so we've covered that earlier in the meeting. Second thing is I am the representative on the C S Board of Control for the, uh, school district. And with my departure, uh, that seat will be open, it still belongs to Saint Christ Central. If they have a member that wants to step forward, uh, to fill that position, uh, that term is, uh, uh, Saint Christ Central's until the election of twenty twenty-two, which is June of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then Jeff, you've indicated that you're interested.
I would do it.
I don't know if there's anybody else that is of interest. But, bring that up and, uh.
Since Jeff will take it all in. You had other purposes to go into Trill Lake. If you want to do that, you're welcome to do it. I just think we ought to fill the seat.
Yeah. If that is acceptable to everybody, I've been invited, they're, they're running, what they call hybrid meetings, or to be the what we've been doing, a combination of virtual and in-person. At Trill Lake, uh, starting in May, meetings are the second Thursday, six, seven PM. So.
It just happens that I'm flying to Montana that night, so I won't go to the meeting now. I blocked it out for the rest of the evening.
The exception to that is usually the annual meeting that is held C S eleven in Turtle Lake, which will be the first Monday in June, which I believe is the seventh.
It's the same night as the school.
Yeah. It'd be the same night as the board learning meeting, so. So with that, uh, that's acceptable to everybody, then I will.
Congratulations.
It's a fun group to be with, the, uh, nice to network with other members of other school boards. Period, use, compare solutions, so. Okay, with that, uh, we have a list of upcoming meetings. We have the WASB new school board member, uh, online orientation meetings. Um, and I have a handout here if anybody would like to look at it. So we have legal roles and responsibilities webinar, which, uh, would be from seven to eight-thirty tomorrow night, or on Thursday, April twenty-ninth, from twelve PM to one-thirty PM. And then we have the key work of school board seminar, which I feel is probably the, the most important, uh, seminar that you can attend. Would be from Thursday night, April twenty-second, from seven till eight-thirty PM, or on Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, from twelve till one-thirty PM, so.
I would encourage all of the new board members to attend, and I've attended them even when I've been a new board member for years, you know, I always learn stuff, it's good, really good information.
Yeah, then last year, it's pretty good crash course, getting started.
But they don't have to go all four, it'd be good to go two, well, they only need to go through, uh, there's, there's two two seminars, as they depicted, the time, they have two times for each of these seminars, so. I'll leave it to the members to choose which one they would like to attend. Okay, May third is our board, uh, learning and special meeting, starting at six-thirty PM. Or was that or not? May fifth is our staff appreciation breakfast, starting at, uh, seven fifteen. And on May seventeenth is our next regular, uh, school board meeting held here at seven PM. This office, this will be the board reorganizational meeting. And which, uh, Tim will start that meeting, and, uh, you will start with the election of officers. And now once the president, uh, board, the president will be elected, that he will take over the meeting and run it from there, so. Uh. Where's she?
Next.
Uh, next date is our May twenty-eighth, uh, SCC graduation ceremony, held at, uh, seven PM at the Tom Sump High School Gym, so.
Anticipate the meeting person?
Yes, the plan first are set.
Yep. Let it go on tomorrow.
And limited attendance of parents or full attendance?
Yep, limited attendance.
Okay.
First game.
Are there any other dates that, uh, we missed other than what we went through tonight? Meeting Sunday eleventh, and the twelfth is thirteen. Or need to confirm. Okay, hearing none, and I will entertain a motion to go into closed session per Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-five, uh, one C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data, or any public employee over which governmental body has a jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This has to do with, uh, consideration of religion and benefits for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Also, per Wisconsin State Statute one, nineteen eighty-five, one F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel, uh, problems or investigation charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which is the South Republic would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigation. This has to do with student assessment exemption requests for the state standard of charging. So. Here, a motion, Kirk is a second, David. Roll call vote, David?
Aye.
Jeff? Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay. With that, we will take a, uh, five-minute recess. We will, we convene in closed session.
Tim, you'll send out a new link for closed session?
Yep, I will.
Thank you.